Let's call the order. The City of Milton Common Council meeting Tuesday, October 15th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting notice was posted at Milton City Hall, Milton Pigly Wiggly, and Hometown Ace Hardware.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Say it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We have an agenda. Pledge of Allegiance. Public comments. We do not have anybody signed in for public comments right now. So we'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda.
I'd move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Alright, number six. Presentation of 2025 nonprofit requests. We have Open Doors Foundation, The Gathering Place, and Milton House Museum. So whoever would like to go first. Alright, go ahead.
Alright, does this sound... Okay. My name is Keaton Claus and I'm the Executive Director at the Milton House Museum. I do not have a presentation this year, which I know you're all gonna be very, very sad about. But what we're gonna talk about tonight just a little bit is what we did in the last year and what we have upcoming. We had some really exciting movement on our strategic plan, which we adopted late last year. And it's gonna be something that we're gonna be really focused on over the next 12, 24 months. One of the biggest things that we're focused on right now is an education initiative where we have partnered with the School District of Milton to get some of our content into, well, resources for curriculum and not just for Milton School District, but for the entire state. They're just working on being our pilot program. So we've been working with their teachers to figure out what we can do as a museum, historic site, to help them when they bring their kids, their students to the museum, what can they be taught outside of just our narrative. So it's getting harder for schools to get permission to do field trips. A lot of times you gotta hit at least two standards if you wanna get approval for it. So we are actually working to align our tour with state standards so teachers can use it for all kinds of stuff. So that's a big focus that we're gonna have over the next year. That also includes developing some really good virtual tours. Hopefully bringing on another staff member so that we have someone who can go out to the schools. We've been hearing that a lot. We want someone who can come to the classroom and work with our students there. So that's a really big initiative that we're working on. Another part of that is we're actually working with the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction. And we are developing, along with them and the State Historical Society, a template that student or teachers can use across the state for any historic site. And align standards. And we're kind of the, we're like the guinea pig that the DPI is using. So we've been actually presenting on that. We'll be up in Appleton this, end of this week, presenting on that at the state conference. And then the big one is that we'll be out in Boston in November for the National Council of Social Studies Conference. So that's gonna be really exciting and definitely getting Milton House on a new platform. So that's what I have. Does anyone have any questions? Or anything I didn't cover? Perfect. Thank you for your time.
Alright, who wants to go next?
Derek Kenzie, Open Doors Foundation. Thanks for having me here tonight. I'm really proud to report this year's Fourth of July Festival was a great success. We had record crowds and we got the report, we actually got a report from the carnival owner that in the last 30 years, this was the largest festival, the largest event he's ever done. So I'm proud to report that. We are now arguably one of the top three or even the largest Fourth of July Festival in the state of Wisconsin. So probably report that to you guys. Next year's Wilder Plan and many new excited changes are already in place. We are very near, we understand that we're near capacity of the festival. Slight enhancements maintain a fresh and a well-executed festival will be the focus that we're shifting towards. We're being very mindful of the limitations of location capacity and safety controls. I'd like to thank the city staff members for all their great work. So Jenny, Ashley, Carrie, and all their awesome staff that's over there. Especially the Public Works. Oh, it's awesome. The Police Department, as well as Johnson Buildings and Grounds up in the school. So they've been great to work with. I do measure my success by the feedback of three areas. One is the local community. I measure it by the attendance and the feedback via the calls, emails, social media items, and it's all been good. I measure it by the local businesses, by their willingness to be involved, by volunteering, by participating, like being part of the parade. And sponsoring, of course, as well. And that's been really good. And then I also measure it by the local government, the measurement of willingness to support the festival's efforts with structural support, such as Public Works and the police staffing, and good communication, and even little things like let me put the post in the parade registration on the city website. And I also measure it by the financial support. So I do understand the complexity of a budget, and I'm very mindful of that task. And I very much appreciate a balanced budget. This year was the first year where we had the schools start implementing the usage fees of $1,000 a day plus miscellaneous expenses. Last year I asked you for $7,500. You only approved $5,000. The school charged me $7,000. So right out the gate, I was negative $2,000 just by existing. I was disappointed with your decision. I'm only asking for $6,000 today. The economic activity and tax generation from the festival alone is well more than pays for the financial investment of the money it's asked. So your decision on supporting my financial request truly respects, truly only reflects on your willingness to support me running it. Besides financial aid, or financial side, another thing I have to ask of you guys in general is I just need people to be better. Okay? I've dealt with many different things. The swept group, two different years, extorted me for more money and abandoned me weeks before the Fourth of July Parade because I wouldn't give them more money. And left me hanging. Keith, got a lot of love for you. This last year I gave you the three-month notice of all activities. It was your decision, but the main fundraiser, that you didn't agree with it. And I totally respect that. No problem with that. But you denied it weeks, just a couple of weeks before it. You didn't give me no time to pivot. All's I ask. Better communication. I know you're adjusting your schedule and stuff like that, but we need to be better. Okay? When a city council member, business owner, throws away a donation bucket at their local business and just says, "Say no, thank you." I need that to be better. It's okay, say no. When the mayor bumps up their political friends in front of the parade and for all citizens for personal gain. And when I confront it, direct quote, "Why should I care? I'm not up for reelection," and turns her back on me and walks away. I need you to be better. When several city council members start basically spreading rumors that my wife and I are swingers and other nasty things. I thought that was silly. But when my wife looks at me and says, "Did they just call me a slut?" That's shameful. I need you to be better. So know this. Unjust, unethical, and nasty politics will be called out. I won't hide behind Facebook. I will say it to your face and from God himself. Just be decent. That's all I'm asking. So, good news is, next year's Fourth of July is gonna be awesome. And we're super excited. And I appreciate your consideration supporting Milton's Community Fourth of July Festival. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Good evening, everyone. Matt Kinzera, Executive Director at The Gathering Place. Thank you all for your continued support of the great work that goes on there. And it's been wonderful to see many of your faces at different events that we've held at The Gathering Place. This year we've seen, we have around six, over 600 members at The Gathering Place. Last time I was before you, we had around 500 members. So in the last year alone, we've seen over 100 member growth. And most of those members are coming right here from the City of Milton. We do get a lot of people from Janesville and surrounding communities. But of those, over 100 new members, about 75% of them were right here in the great city of Milton. And so we're excited to see that. That's how we measure our success. If people show up and come through our doors and pay for that membership and are active in our community, we know we're doing what matters. And we're not just a senior center, we're a community center. And this year, our concert series, we just finished up in September. Saw immeasurable growth. It was just incredible. We added an additional concert this year and saw thousands of people from surrounding communities coming to Milton, not just to come to the concert, but also to come to the community as a whole and experience all that Milton has to offer. So we're just thankful that we have this opportunity. You may or may not know, but The Gathering Place operates very differently than a lot of other senior centers. We run as a nonprofit organization thanks to the generosity of our founder, Marion Allen. Most senior centers run as a part of their city municipality, which puts a lot of burden financially on the city or the municipality itself. And we, because of the way we run, do not require that in order to be successful. And I think we, well, without a doubt, we're one of the most successful and active and engaging senior centers, not only in this area of Wisconsin, I came from Eau Claire, Wisconsin, but really the entire state. And so it's really a beautiful asset that we have here, and I'm just thankful to be a part of it. And we could talk numbers all day, which I'm happy to do, but it's the conversations. My, for those of you who've been to The Gathering Place, my office is the first one right on the right. And you can't go into the building without passing me. And so I get to overhear the conversations as people come in and talk to our completely volunteer front desk staff. And one of the comments that I just wanted to highlight this year, although there's many and it's hard to choose. There was a woman that came in and she's a very active member, has been for a long time. And she, in passing, was speaking to another member there and simply said, "This place is the reason that I was able to get through my husband passing away." And The Gathering Place is what its name says. We're a place where people gather. We're much more than a senior center. We're a community. We're a place where people celebrate together. We're a place where people mourn together. We just got done having our bird ceremony. We have a beautiful fence right between The Gathering Place and The Gathering Green that people can purchase birds in honor of family members that have passed away. And I had the opportunity to lead a ceremony along with other community members, just to honor the names that are on that wall. And it was one of the most beautiful services I think I've ever been a part of. We have a lot of fun at The Gathering Place. But sometimes it's when we come together and link arms and talk about what's hard that truly matters. And we can't get through this challenging life without one another. And that's truly what The Gathering Place offers. And so we're so thankful for your support. As a nonprofit organization, we're really thankful to Marion Allen and what she's left for us. She's passed a number of years ago, but she also left a foundation. That foundation supports, it's not a guarantee, but it has supported about 40 to 45% of our budget. And then we have to raise the rest of the money. And we do that through renting out our facility, through doing fundraisers. We make the fundraisers fun, of course, because it's in the name. So we do like a Door County Fish Boy with cod, which is way better than whitefish. And the concert series is a fundraiser as well, although everybody comes and just has a great time. And so we're very creative in the way that we make up that additional 55% of our budget. And the amount that you give to that is very appreciated and we're very thankful for it. And we just ask that you continue and that you continue in your generosity. We're thankful that we have the opportunity to not put such a burden on the city municipality that we happen to be in. And we're thankful to be able to do that. And we work hard to keep that going, getting creative, getting creative with all of our funding and the ways that we raise that support. And so we'd simply ask that you, like, I'm just here doing my part. I'm here as the director of The Gathering Place. You are here as the city council members. And I'm just simply asking you to continue to do your part as you have been doing. Gathering Place exists because this community is so generous. And I don't ever seen that, see that going away. And it's a great resource that we have right in the center of this beautiful town. And the comment that I hear over and over and over and over again is, "I can't believe this exists in the middle of such a small community." And I think we have a better senior center than cities 10 times our size. And I think that will continue as long as we all continue to do our part. So thank you for your time and have a great rest of your meeting. Any questions?
Thank you very much for your presentations. And I am gonna address the inappropriate and disrespectful comments that were made by Derek Kenzie. Because they were taking, those statements were taken out of context. And we do not have anybody else's contextual input for whatever he said. And that's really disappointing to me because that is, I would not tolerate anybody on the council casting personal insults to anybody in the public or to each other. That is not the code of conduct that we present at these meetings or we present to the public. And I expect better from our community leaders than to come up to the podium, ask for taxpayer dollars, and then insult the people that are providing resources above and beyond to invest in a festival that he's in charge of. So first of all, the cash money that goes to any nonprofit typically is not the only investment that the city makes. So yes, they come every year and they'll request specific dollar amounts. But in addition to the dollar amounts that we give, the Fourth of July and the parade, we invest overtime with our police officers. We invest taxpayer money and paying overtime for our Department of Public Works staff. We have people that are working double, triple shifts, and we are using taxpayer dollars to support that festival, above and beyond any $5,000, $6,000, $7,000 that is requested. I believe in that festival. I believe that it strengthens our community and that we should continue to invest resources in that festival. I, the whole community loves that festival. It's an important part of our community. I am disappointed in the leadership. And I just could not not comment on that inappropriate behavior. In addition to what we do for the Milton House as far as giving additional cash, we also provide staffing for their Civil War Living History Days. And that is another investment in taxpayer funding. In addition to the cash that we provide to The Gathering Place, we do their payroll for them for free. So there's a lot more investment that the council makes and the taxpayers make to these institutions that are not reflected just in the cash requests that they have. And I really think that that's important because the money, the cash money is tax levy and the wages are tax levy. And we put a lot of work and time into all of our nonprofits. And I think the city staff deserve to be acknowledged and the taxpayers' investment deserves to be acknowledged. So, having said that, we can move on to our draft budget review.
Alright. Tonight, we're gonna do just a quick review of the draft budget as it stands tonight. It'll be a quick tonight. The big draft presentation was October 1st, and this is just any changes that have happened since October 1st. Last meeting, we talked about how the budget is constructed and some of the restrictions we faced when building a budget. Just a quick review that our two state imposed caps are the expenditure restraint and the levy limit. As of tonight, we will levy $3,694,3696. As of tonight, this budget does qualify for the levy limit, but still does not qualify for the expenditure restraint. As of today, there needs to be reductions in the budget still of $24,564 to meet the expenditure restraint before the budget can be adopted. Just a couple of quick changes. Since we last met, health insurance came through for 2025, and it's actually going to be a slight reduction this year. The fire department has provided a preliminary number for us, and that's gonna be an increase of $17,559. And the state transportation aids are decreasing this year, so that's gonna also reduce our budget by $14,596. Capital items, all items that were listed on October 1st are still within the budget. No changes have been made to capital. Tonight, you heard from the three nonprofits making requests for 2025. Their requests for 2025 are The Gathering Place, $10,000, Milton House Museum, $10,000, and Open Doors Foundation, $6,000. As of today, those three requests are what are also listed in the budget. Council during this tonight, you can make a formal decision on these, or you can wait until November 6th to make a formal decision on what is listed in the budget right now for those nonprofit requests. As of today, the budget goals, we are within levy limits for 2025, and there will be no reductions in services. We do still need to have a balanced budget and qualify for expenditure restraints in order to receive funding from the state in 2026 for expenditure restraints. Just a couple budget unknowns. The assessment ratio is unknown. That's not gonna be known until mid to late November, and that does not affect the levy. And then the fire department allocation, as I said, we have preliminary figures, but we don't quite have a final number yet. Takeaways for 2025, we'll be maintaining current service levels, compensating all employees with the same increase. No change in the percentage paid on insurance premiums. Our budget's qualifying for levy limits, and the budget does not qualify for expenditure restraints. And we still need a reduction of $24,564 before the budget can be adopted. And just finally, a little look forward at budget schedule. Next meeting is November 6th. That'll be the public hearing and final presentation, and then in hopes of approving a budget on November 19th.
Thanks, Kelsey. Any questions or comments by anyone? Okay? Alright. Discussion of possible action regarding a conditional use permit request for Claws &amp; Quality Chocolate.
Claws &amp; Quality Chocolate has submitted a conditional use permit request to construct a building greater than 100,000 square feet at their site at 2100 Putnam Parkway. Claws &amp; Quality Chocolate owns and operates the facility at 2100 Parkway. They're proposing to construct an addition onto said facility. The proposed addition results in the building floor area additional, and I, excuse me, I had a wrong number here, is 115,000 square feet. In M2 zoning district, a conditional use permit is required for buildings or additions to existing buildings, which result in a total gross floor area of over 10,000, 100,000 square feet. The fiscal impact is the developer and the city previously entered it into a TIF development agreement for the site. This addition will be included in that agreement. The construction of the facility results in additional tax revenue for Tax Incremental Financing District Number 11. City administration recommends approval of conditional use permit. And the planning commission heard this earlier today and also had forwarded a positive recommendation for the conditional use permit.
I would move approval of the conditional use permit for Claws &amp; Quality Chocolate.
Second?
There's a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion of possible action regarding a residential developers agreement with Park Place Investments.
City of Milton requires a residential development agreement for residential subdivision developments. Park Place Investment is continuing development along Ridgeview Drive. The residential developer agreement outlines role and responsibilities of the city and developer, sequencing of the project, and development's payment in lieu of parkland dedication. The phase involves construction of seven single-family condominiums. The developer intends to begin construction in 2024. Once completed, the developer will dedicate the public roadway extensions to Ridgeview Drive. Agreement has been reviewed by developer and the city attorney. There is no fiscal impact to the City of Milton related to the subject development agreement. Costs incurred by the city engineer's consultant, the city attorneys will be invoiced to the developer. Additionally, the city will receive requisite parkland dedication fee to be allocated to the Parks Fund. Recommend motion is the city administration recommends approval of the proposed development, developers agreement with Park Place Investments.
Questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the developers agreement with Park Place Investments.
Second?
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding a commercial facade grant application from Leo Muradini. And I am very sorry if I mispronounced that, for 740 East St. Mary Street.
I'm gonna ask the council to table this at this time. Community Development Authority reviewed this yesterday and requested further information.
Discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 2024-17, exceed the levy limit for the Edgerton Fire Protection District.
While it is not anticipated that the city is going to need to use this CPI plus 2% model that is allowed by Wisconsin State statute, in order for any municipality within the fire district to use it, all 10 municipalities must pass this resolution. So we're passing this resolution essentially in support of our fellow municipalities that are involved in the fire commission that would like to utilize this CPI plus 2.
This will be a roll call vote, but before that, are there any questions or comments?
It is our hope. I am unsure at this time. I'll probably know more on Thursday after their meeting.
I can tell you, Ken, that last year, all of the municipalities in the district passed the CPI plus 2 resolution. Not all of them use the CPI plus 2 in their budgeting.
That is correct.
I'll make a motion to pass Resolution 2024-17.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Oh, oh, no, it's a roll call. Sorry. Go ahead, Jenny. Smith? Walker? Wilson?
Aye.
Ruch is absent from the meeting. Holbrook?
Aye.
Stockman?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 2024-18, allowing voter registration in the clerk's office on Election Day. allowing voter registration in the clerk's office on Election Day.
So the expectation is that Election Day on November 5th is going to be busy. We do have some limitations to our polling place, which is considered our council chambers. After review by staff, we have talked about possibly allowing voter registration in clerk's office. So what that means is it's going to be in the windows that are, as you come in on that side. This has been done in the past for presidential elections, so this is not something new. However, it is recommended to have a resolution to verify that. It is only allowed if it's in the same building. So we have, and we are asking council for support of approval of this so we can allow this. Again, our goal is to reduce wait times and keep this area very clear so for ADA accessibility.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion? Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding forfeitures for Chapter 78 zoning.
Municipal Court Judge Cuffler has presented the council with recommended forfeitures governing Chapter 78 within the Milton City ordinances for zoning. Our office is not able to take any enforcement currently as there is no bond set. So after discussion with Attorney Schrader, it was recommended that forfeiture schedule be presented to the council for any zoning code violations that occur within the city. As you see before with the memo, it outlines the first offense at a hundred eighty-seven dollars and second and subsequent offenses, sorry, second and subsequent offenses starting at nine hundred forty-three dollars. I did talk with Judge Cuffler regarding the disparity between the two fine amounts and that second and subsequent was aimed at correcting the action and to serve as a deterrent. So it was corrected after the first offense. So the memo presented regarding the first and second offense, city leadership, excuse me, recommends approval of the forfeitures as presented.
And these would be residential or commercial zoning violations?
That's correct.
What would be an example of a violation? Don't fit this.
Anything that Code Enforcement Specialist Larson would handle. So if there's brush accumulation, deteriorating, deterioration of the residence itself that's not being corrected. If there's soffit hanging or take for instance, the one residence that we struggled with where there's animals infesting the property and it's not being corrected by the property owner, offenses like that.
One of the things that Blaine's been really good about is that if there is a residential home that's in violation, he will give the resident information about the facade, the residential grant, and encourage them to apply for that to help defer those costs. And I can also say that Blaine and the city give people many opportunities to correct before they'll do anything. Like, we want to help people. We want to make sure everybody's following the zoning ordinances and we do everything we can before we issue anything or go to court or anything. So if anything, we, you know, we give too many opportunities. So I can see why. And I'm not saying we shouldn't. I'm just saying like, I can understand why Judge Cuffler may want to do some deterring because we spend a lot of time working with people. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the forfeitures as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding Ordinance 224-546 and Ordinance Amending Section 66-71A, creating Section 66.71F regarding snow and ice removal.
This action takes the city's policy on winter closures of dead and sidewalks and makes it into an ordinance as recommended by the city attorney. The city currently has a policy of allowing for property owners to request to not remove snow and ice if their sidewalk has no connecting sidewalk. Historically, the requests also include sidewalks and cul-de-sacs, undeveloped areas, areas where there's little pedestrian traffic and areas that have small or no terraces and receive more snow than regular street. This ordinance would codify the policy and allow only those whose sidewalks has no connecting sidewalk. Sidewalk and cul-de-sacs, undeveloped areas, areas where there's little pedestrian traffic and areas that have small or no terraces and receive more snow than regular street would now be required to remove snow and ice. The Public Works Committee recommended approval of this ordinance. Administration recommends approval of Ordinance 2024-546 and Ordinance Amending Section 66-71A and creating Section 66.71F regarding snow and ice removal. An enactment of an ordinance requires a first, second, and third reading and a motion to adopt. The common council approved the first reading of the ordinance at the October 1st, 2024 common council meeting. If the council prefers, the third reading may be waived at the same time the second reading is completed.
All right. Questions or comments? Hey, Ken, just a second. Go ahead, Bill.
Second.
All right. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? That motion carries. All right. That's it. Okay. Turn the page and here we are. Committee reports.
I would just, general evidence, kind of a clarification on a commentary here. This city doesn't actually staff the Civil War Living History Days. They do set up barricades beforehand, but then we take them down ourselves and they pick them up on Monday. So they only work, you know, do stuff during normal business hours, I believe. So, but they aren't in staff on site during the actual event.
Thank you for clarification.
Just wanted to add the clarification. The Preservation Committee has not met recently.
Anybody else?
The CDA met yesterday. They reviewed the 2025 work plan and approved it. They are looking into the facade grant improvement programs that at their next meeting, commercial and residential, to get some clearer language in there for people wanting to take advantage of those.
Any other committee reports? Okay. Staff, chief?
I got a couple of things. Officer Samantha Zabel, or Zebel, has completed her field training officer program. So she's now going to be one of our agency's field trainers for new officers. Just today, we wrapped up our defense and arrest tactics training, less lethal training for our department. So it's annual certification for less lethal training and defense and arrest tactics, which we do annually, which includes baton work, pepper spray, or OC. And I threw in this year, ground defense. Being former instructor, that was one of my favorite things to do. So I'm sure city hall staff saw some people getting, rolling around on the mat today. Reiterating from last time, we'll have our drug take back scheduled for October 26th from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. at Charlotte's Coffee Stop, 525 College Street. We'll have officers on hand to take back prescription medications that are unwanted in homes. Good news also, our, every year, we do a shop with a cop event. I've yet to set the date this year, but I finally did get the grant approved, so that will occur. And just today, I had ordered our two squads for 2025. So it's an unknown ETA on those. And it's also unknown when they close the window for ordering. But I did get the approval to order them and they won't bill us till next year. That's all.
Library.
We had a very successful history hike this past Saturday in partnership with the Ice Age Trail Alliance, the Milton College Preservation Society, and the Milton House. And we did a little walk on the Ice Age Trail to the different museums in town for some history. And then we partnered with Charlotte's and Girl Works Brewing to provide a discounted drink to the participants. So that was a very gorgeous day for that. And at our library board meeting, we approved some changes in our hours for next year. And based off of feedback and comments on our past annual surveys, we are gonna be opening up at nine o'clock, starting in 2025.
Thank you. Mark? Kelsey? Jenny?
So we have an election in 21 days. Just in case anyone didn't know that. So we are working through, in the, over the next couple of weeks, we have election workers who are going through trainings, whether it be here plus through Rock County. And we actually had, I mentioned it at our last meeting, was that I met with clerks in Rock County. We did a roundtable. It was primarily focused on election safety and security. So it is, it is primarily talked about for election, but it was really interesting to hear some information that actually will increase safety in our facility for future events, just in general. And then we will have SISA be coming on October 22nd. They are offering a free service where they're doing an inspection of our city facilities, city hall, police department. And it's going to be roughly about a two-hour walk through. And they will be providing updates or recommendations to us. So it's a nice free service just to make sure that our facility is safe for everyone. And then for border review, which is October 23rd, we at this time do not have any objections for that. So I've talked to our assessor and we have had roughly about 74 calls. And yeah, no other questions at this point on the assessments. Thank you.
Paul?
We've had some developments that we've been working on that were approved tonight and approved by the planning commission earlier today. We've, Kelsey's been doing a lot of work on the budget and I've been assisting her with that. And things just continue to move along smoothly.
Isn't that great to hear? Contradicturing other statements. Okay, team building exercise. Here we go. It's super easy. It's super easy. So besides the state of Wisconsin, what state would you like to visit to see the fall colors change? It can be a state you've already went to or a state you've never been to. But what other state do you think would be a good trip to see fall colors?
Maine.
Ken, can you say it again?
But I decided on Vermont.
Look at Kelsey go.
I'd choose Maine.
I say that I can't skip to New York.
I'll go Michigan. I'm gonna follow Kelsey. We could ride together.
I'll go with Colorado.
Jenny?
I really don't have a great answer because I've never thought about it. So I'm gonna say maybe even Alaska.
Oh, sure.
Just be different.
I'll say wherever the Packers are playing away game.
Perfect. So the marks and the marks and the audience. Besides Disney World. Oh, no, oh, you did? Okay, okay, audience. Maine. Okay, nice. Montana? Okay, nice. Our next meeting date is November 6th. It is a Wednesday. It is after the election. And is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All those in favor? Okay, we're adjourned.